County Commission July meeting to order. Roll call, Mr. Maney?
Mr. Rich, present. Mr. Venable, Ms. Gilbert?
Present.
Mr. Sis?
Present.
Chairman, present.
We'll have our prayer about Mr. Porter and our pledge by Ms. Gilbert.
God, our Father in heaven, we are again before you. Be blessed and thankful for this county, all the wonderful people of the county. God, we're thankful for this country, the freedoms that we have. And God, we do pray that we'll never take them for granted, but we'll always give you the glory for everything that we do and everything we accomplish. Right now, we pray for those that need special prayers. Pray for Commissioner Venable as he's undergoing through tests, but pray for good results from those tests for him. Pray that he watch over God's all, every day, Christ's sake.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next will be approval for the agendas for the July meeting.
I'm not sure.
Got a motion and taking all the favors, say aye. Opposed. Next to the public comments, first up is Mr. Collins.
Approach, this is my first time here. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm just here to ask for maybe you guys and maybe looking to the funding to increase the capacity of the RV sites at Jackson County. And there's a lot of outside folks that come through. There's an app that's been added that brings, it's called RV Parking, and it lets people traveling through Scottsville know what's here. But when people get here, the park's empty. Currently, there are 67 people on the waiting list. The number one person's been on since like later 2016. And if you could find the funds, maybe through recreation grants or whatever, to increase the size of the RV park and maybe to put in a mini water park and charge for both. But anyway, I'm just here to throw it out there, something to think about. And the reason, oh, there's 67, there may be more now, or there may be less, because I was the number 67. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comment. We do have a long, we realize, but any more sites that we are looking into right now, trying to figure out exactly where school costs, if we can do any stages maybe. And I agree with you about the water park or pool, I'd like to see something else. We have a lot of tired couples out there bringing their grandkids, and I think they'd love to have a pool and go to that. So, I think we got a lot of options there. But we will be looking into expanding those RV sites, because it is a main record site. It stands by itself out there.
Well, make your friend, then when you take adventure over to Tallahome or Anchester and check out their deal, because that would be really nice for us to have right here. Some mini water slide park and things like that. So, just right across the mountain.
That was just mentioned kind of coincidence. You brought it up, glad you're here. Representative County, myself and Danny, and I guess the rest of us too, probably about three weeks ago when Danny and we was discussing, discussed this. There's no need to have something sitting vacant when we have some potential making money on it. And we got that whole hillside, and I know a few years ago, this board came up commission, that was way up the pile of dollars. We're trying to fix it. You know, I feel like, and Danny said the same thing, that we can look at it over and kind of get a better scale of what needs to be done and try to make something happen.
Thanks. Mr. Allison?
I'll introduce myself. I'm Robert Dean Allison, and I live in Bryan, Alabama. I'm concerned about County Road 93. It needs some attention now. That road is needed for our community. I've got people that lives on the top of the mountain, goes to church down over there. They have to go through Tennessee or through Stevenson and up through 91 to get there. I would like for y'all to have some attention put to it, get something started. They stock signs at both ends of the mountain, on the top and the bottom, can't get on the road. I don't believe it's impossible to fix a road. They dump trucks and they contractors that would do it if y'all would initiate the, whatever process you need to go through to get that contract started with them too. And I need that road for post office. I'm a member of the North San Mount Lodge, and I have to go to Tennessee or down through Stevenson to get up there. And it's an inconvenience to me, plus the people that I've called today, trying to get them to come down here and present their case to you. And I know you've got all kinds of bureaucratic stuff that you have to go through. I'm a Jackson County resident, I'm a northern race here. I went in the Army, I served my military duty for eight years, and I got out. And I'm a Vietnam vet, but I would like to have some word on something being done for it as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
We appreciate your company. I appreciate your service too. Mr. Campbell, you want to kind of tell us where we're at in the procedures on what we're doing?
Yes, sir. So, I think we spoke on the phone, Mr. Allison.
Yeah, I called your class already.
Right, and so I can kind of just refresh you maybe on our conversation. And I don't, I've talked several. So, as you probably recall, there are four mountain sides closed right now, two bridges closed. So, we have about 20 boots on the ground, okay? Now, some of that work, we could start on, and some of it we can't, okay? So, the debris removal, the washouts, the things that were extremely emergency in nature where the road was not totally damaged, that was our focus initially, okay? Now, also, since those events have occurred, we have been working with folks to look at these sites. There was FEMA side investigations that have been going on, and one as recent as last week. So, the short answer to what you're asking, I think, and maybe I can give you, is it's a series of steps that FEMA has to be satisfied in before we can do anything. Now, getting them satisfied is one thing, having the money to fix all of this damage and do it all properly and all at the same time is another matter. So, maybe you know, maybe you don't know about the county's financial situation, but we, if FEMA wasn't in the equation, we simply do not have the money to fix all these sites at one time, okay? So, we're going to have to take them one at a time in hopes of return cash flow to fund the next site. The first site that we're focusing on is County Road 17, okay? That's a federal aid route. That is one that draws files for ER funding through the Federal Highway Administration. The reason that's a focus, one, it has more traffic on it than County Road 93, 189, or 38. But the reason it's the main focus is that that ER funding through FHWA, we feel like, will be quicker returned than through FEMA. Okay, so, there's processes in getting that going as well, and that's nearer a start date than the others. But let's just assume 117 is ready to begin, it's shovel ready, and we're ready to start. We will have to do 17 and see those reimbursements coming in before this body's going to have any confidence in starting another project. You're talking about multimillion dollar projects, and even at our match, which can be as much as 20%, that's still more money than we can afford. So, we have to be strategic in the way that we plan this recovery, okay? So, 17 starting is going to be first. And then, depending on changes, but I see County Road 189 being next, and the reason I say that, it's the only way up and down for those people. There's 15 to 20 homes up there that rely on that road to serve their home, and that is their only way to get to their home. So, that'll most likely be the next one. Then most likely 93, then most likely County Road 38. So, I apologize for your inconvenience in going to the post office and going to lodge, but it's just simply not possible for us to do everything at one time, and so I hope you understand that.
Well, I still can't understand why we can't get contractors started though. It don't have to be finished overnight, but it needs to be something moving on it, in my opinion. And I don't like being in the area of where we've put last on the list.
Well, number one, it don't have anything to do, I mean, if we had the funding, we could just hire contractors. We just don't have the funding to hire a contractor just to do it. That's what he was saying, is we're trying to do it as we get FEMA dollars coming in, and we're trying to be smart about it, because we just don't have the funding. We used to have TBA and Lua funds and different funds that the county used to draw, but we don't have that anymore. It's just gone. And everybody else, you know, tax base has increased, and ours is either stayed the same or decreased.
But can you not get the contractors to work on it on a guarantee when the FEMA comes through?
They won't turn money as soon as they do the work. Because see, they have to pay their employees, you know, so they won't do it unless, you know, we're ready to pay them, you know, I don't know, I guess it's monthly, don't they?
Well, when I worked, I always got paid after the job. I never did get paid done until I done what I was supposed to do for the pay. And that's why I thought they ought to be able sometime to get something started.
If we had the money, we could do that, but we don't have the money to guarantee that we can pay them when they complete the job.
Well, ain't FEMA involved in this, ain't they going to pay something?
Yeah, but we did, when was that job we done in 2000?
2015.
We done a job in 2015.
Just getting paid.
We just now got to funding on a job for FEMA we done in 2015. So, it's took almost four years to get FEMA money. So, you don't get it just because you apply for it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a long process.
I know, but all this bureaucratic stuff.
Like I said, I'm very aware, I've lived in Bryan for 50 years, so I'm real aware of your situation and everybody out there. And you're not lied, I can promise. Ever since that I've been on this body, every bit of money has been split up equally to every district, District 1, 2, 3, and 4. Actually, if you want to be honest, District 1's got more than the other three districts for the last three or four years because of federal aid routes that just happened to be in.
Yeah.
But I can promise you, as soon as we can, we're going to get to it, because we're going to get to it as fast as possible.
Well, it feels to me like we've been ignored, you know? I put up the stop signs and blocked the road off, and it feels to me like we have been overlooked and just forgotten.
And that's why people in 17 feels the same way, because they've been here before this, been talking. And it ain't that we forgot anybody, it's like at 17, we got to do testing, and they're already through a lot of that testing, and now they're on to the next process. So, you don't see us doing stuff, but the road department's actually working, and they're getting these processes done. That way, when they can get contractors, you know, they'll be getting them on the road. Just that way, we got all of our things worked done. But we have to follow procedure. I've got calls saying that, hey, I've got dump trucks and backhoes, we can get down there and start. But we can't do that. We have to follow federal regulations. We can't just go in there like people do in their backyard and put a driveway in. So, it's a little more difficult for us.
Well, I've been a loyal citizen of the county for all of my life, saved me six years.
Yes, sir.
But it does feel like I'm being...
Even last week, a guy approached me, asking, why can't we just get something fixed for the emergency vehicles and stuff? There's a liability on the county if something was to happen, something, I mean, I do construction work myself.
Yeah.
If something happens and you put an 80,000 pound load going up that mountain and it slides off, the liability of the county is going to be, it'll be our, you know, up to us. We just, I mean, it's an iffy situation.
Well, the fire department and the ambulance services are all right there. They have to come down, and I've had a problem. My wife, she's in it, and I do, you know, I know they can get there eventually, but it needs some work done on it before they could get there.
Mr. Allison, what you just said right there, I've heard it over and over, been commissioner, I walked in the reference yesterday, Bobby come in just right before I got the plate. I told him, I said, Bobby, I wish you'd been here a minute earlier, I could went ahead and ate, just making jokes, you know? This guy walked up to me, he said, Mr. Sis, he said, can you look me in eye and sincerely tell me that County Road 17 will be repaired? I said, yes, sir, I can. I said, that road is not going to be closed, it's just the procedures that we're going through. And I said, our hands are tied. I said, we're going to make it happen. I said, we've got these other roads crossed Jackson County, same situation, but not having money. It makes us where we can't do anything. And as the county engineer has spoken it time and time again, you know, you got to come out and let them do all the soil test and everything to go. Like me and you, we look at things, say, we can jump out there with some equipment and fix this road.
Yeah, I do.
But in order to make this funding complete, it has to go through their guidelines, and it's a sad thing for us, elected officials, and we feel like we can't do anything to push it forward for our people.
And they ain't no expert that you can do on that paperwork, procedure.
Doing all we can do. Like you said, I think he met with some this past Tuesday, and that was kind of unusual right before 4th July, I think, if I'm correct with Johnson, what he stated. You know, I was really surprised that aid came out that week, but, you know, it's something we've been definitely pushing along, but it's just a situation that worries us, because, you know, our next lot of gifts, we're going, winter time's going to be here. And I know we're up there at the bottom of the mountain, there's a church pit, you know, we're up there within two miles.
Yeah, it ain't no trouble to get the guy. It seems to me like our bureaucratic hands is tied by some reason, there's nobody acting on the initiating whatever form they need to fill out to get that started.
Well, we can guarantee you the forms have been filled out and the hoops have been jumped through as much as possible.
Yeah, we've done everything we can do as far as us, but we...
I appreciate that, if you can, but I do feel like, and I just want y'all to understand, I'm not down on none of y'all. I'm wanting some relief of that area.
We understand the frustration, sir, and understand that you would feel better if you would actually see some physical work being done.
I would, yes, I would. I'd like to see it started. You know, I know it can't be fixed overnight, wave them on or nothing. It's got to take time, but it needs to get started.
Well, it is started, it's just not the physical part. The paperwork is, as much as Mr. Campbell and his crew can get done, that the government will accept as fast as they will come in here, as fast as they will take the paperwork from us, we can guarantee you it's being turned in and filled out.
Okay. I know it's a comfort, but I think, to be honest with you, this is probably the fastest I've seen it move. Normally, it takes longer. It's kind of moved a little quicker. And to be honest with you, I would really worry that it would be, we'd be at the three or four year age.
Oh, perfect.
And, you know, Mr. Campbell has really worked with them and got things moving a lot quicker than I thought it would. I've been kind of shocked at how quick, and I know it don't sound quick to you, but, I mean, looking back on other projects, it's moved quicker than.
Well, you know, it's the act of God. I know the flood come and washed it out, but there is relief for that. There's supposed to be disaster relief that they could get started on.
What about some, I mean, years ago, National Guard armor could, or anything, we couldn't get any help from them, you know?
I don't think so anymore. I don't think they do anymore.
That's what I'm explaining, they did it years ago. We didn't, something's got to be done, we understand, as soon as possible.
Well, I appreciate y'all for hearing me and my concerns, and...
I got your phone number, and when I find out an update, I'll make sure to give you a call and keep you updated.
Appreciate it.
And we're going to try to get a community meeting set up for the Bryan area.
I saw a hundred people today, tried to get them to come down here with my concern and theirs.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can get a community meeting set up in Bryan.
We got to do it.
That way, we can explain it to everybody, and maybe by then, we'll have, you know, wait till something else, some other update, so.
But when you're in, you can understand my...
I will do, I will do. We appreciate it.
It's been a concern of mine ever since it's happened. I mean, I understand, I mean, it's just basically cut, you know, it's about cutting your left hand off, you know, it's aggravating, but just as soon as, as soon as we're going, just as fast as the paperwork will let us.
Yeah, all right. Any more questions, Mr. Allison?
No, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. McCann, Mr. ...
Thank y'all for allowing me to speak. Mr. Allison's done a pretty good job of explaining the situation with 93. However, one thing that I see there left out, State Route 71's going to be closed for five days.
I did find out some information on that. It's just going to be closed from right past 14 to about flat right before across, and so everybody, like for me, coming to work, I'll be able to come down, take a ride on 14 and keep my regular route.
You will.
My wife, I can go to Trenton, going to Fort Payne, the way she goes. But it's just going to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And five days, or four, five days.
Still over the weekend?
Yes, they're going to finish it Sunday.
Okay, either way, there's still going to be people that doesn't know about 14, that's going to have trouble getting through that area, and possibly some people could be going that way to go off of 93. I do agree that 93 needs to be opened up, especially for emergency services. You're asking, setting yourself up for failure. And I just, I really feel like, I know we can, although we don't have the money, I've heard that at every meeting. I've been to four, I've been to every meeting, I've heard that at every meeting.
You're going to keep hearing it.
I'm going to keep hearing it. But here's what I am here to tell you tonight. These people have elected jobs to come in here and do a job. And I understand y'all are doing a good job doing all you can do. But when I've got a problem at my house, if I can't afford to fix it, I'd get me another job or do something else, bring the money in.
Borrow money.
I want to see actions where y'all are doing something to change the situation, not just hollering the problems over here with whatever Livingston or whatever. Don't blame the problem on somebody else. Take care of your problems. Let's either put some tax in, or something, let's see, there's some kind of, something you can do as a commission to raise more, there's got to be.
Our hands are tied.
County Commission cannot raise any levy, any tax, any fee, so that's the reason we're saying all that, we're saying...
We can't reappropriate money?
No, not without their permission.
No, that's... I mean, I guess like you, I've learned a lot sitting behind this desk, and just as I told Mr. Allison, it is kind of embarrassing to sit here, and you did, you elected me, and the rest of us. But there's not a thing that we can do, you know, to make things move forward, believe me. I've tried everything to push it forward, and I want to do what's best for the people, so, you know, I wish that we could, as he said...
Here's the problem I've got with that. I raise sheep, and when I get a sheep that's not productive, that won't raise a lamb, I get rid of that sheep. If we're not able to do nothing as a county commission, there's still a way with the commission. We need somebody that can give us some action. If the legislator has got all the power in Jackson County, what's the purpose of the commission? Honestly?
Yeah.
What is the purpose?
Agreed.
Anybody got an answer for that?
The purpose of the commission is try to work with and do the best of what is available for the citizens of Jackson County that we elected to take care of.
That's exactly right.
You're looking to at one aspect of this county. You got the Sheriff's Department, you got the jail, you got the road department, you got solid waste, you know, this whole courthouse, that if the county commission went here, all these services that you, people take for granted of wouldn't have. Now, you are talking about a situation that needs to be changed, but what we're telling you is it can't be changed here. This is a conversation that needs to be had with our legislators, they're the ones who need, and they can change it. They can change it by one local law that says, hey, we'll give the county commission the ability to do what they need to do to fix the problem. And they can do that.
Okay.
And we don't have a problem fixing the problem.
Okay, we don't have a problem fixing the problem. As a commission, tell the community what y'all need to step over to Livingston's office and say, hey, as a commission, we got the support of the county, we want this done.
That's what I'm doing right now.
What's it going to take?
That's what I'm doing right now.
Does it take a thousand people to sign a piece of paper? Does it take, what does it take? What's the answer to that?
Get them in here and let's have a meeting with them.
Well, next Tuesday night at 6 o'clock, the courtroom one, we're going to be having a town hall meeting, and they have been invited. So, that would be a perfect time for y'all to bring those concerns.
I would agree with that, then.
Yeah, if they come, and they've been invited.
So, it's a possibility they may not even show up.
Well, they've been invited. So, I can't tell you if they will or won't.
And like I say, I do appreciate the time to speak, I really do, but I have grave concerns that anything other than what's happening, if you allow this to continue without some resolution, nothing will ever change.
You're right.
You know, and...
It's going to get worse, I think.
And always gets worse before it gets better, and I understand, but we're not doing anything to put pressure on Livingston. We got to take him out, I'm good, Jim, let's do something, you know?
Yeah.
Let's get something done. I want this commission to be able to say, hey, we got this changed. I support y'all. I may sound like I'm against you, but I am fully supportive of you.
Thank you for being here.
But I want y'all to step up to the plate and say, hey, Mr. Livingston, people in my county want this to happen. I want this to happen. Don't be scared of him because he got some type. He puts his britches on one leg at a time, it's like way there.
We met with him.
We met with him.
We met with him, and again, we called him till 8:00.
You know, we can't, we will always get, oh, y'all wearing their phone up. Put his phone number out on some of these roads.
Yeah.
Hey, I ain't scared to put a sign up with his name and phone number on it. He's a public servant.
Yeah.
Don't think it didn't cost my mind to put y'all's name up there with his phone number on it, but I didn't, you know? What name, fought all the way here for Danny Richards, the ten up here, from Linda Gilbert, here's Mike Sis, you know? But I'm not going to do that, because I'm not...
You need a lot of help to fix my house.
But I want to see some action from this commission, I really do.
Yeah.
And I don't want to continue to hear, we don't have the money, we don't, I understand we don't have the money. But when I don't have money at my house or something, I either get rid of something, I make changes where if I need it, if we need it, I need it, because I make changes elsewhere. If I cut down the electric bill, open windows up, that's what I do. But when we need our roads fixed, we're not seeing any action, we're seeing the same thing, hey, it's over here. Hey, let's go over and talk to that man. Invite him to every meeting, make him, let him come to every meeting. We elected him too. May not elect him again, but, you know, we want to see some action. I appreciate y'all's time.
I appreciate you, government, and I agree, but it's going to take community such as yourself, Richard Allen.
If everybody can tell 10 people, then them 10 tell 10 people, and get a big volume of people around, and I mean, and let, everybody's almost be heard, that's going to be the best way to get...
Just like the 16th, that's going to be, to me, it's community's time.
Right.
We're, this commission is giving you and the rest of Jackson County a platform and saying, here it is. We're giving you a platform to tell Governor Ivey, our state senators, everybody how you feel, media's going to be there. So, you know, we're going to give you a platform, but we need people to show up and express their concern.
Well, I've done calls with Ivey, and they said there was no need for it being as long as what it was. That's what they told me, but...
Well, we appreciate it. Mr. Morgan, pleasure for your time.
Well, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Guffey. Talking about road problems, there's other problems. I'm actually here today in my capacity as coordinator for First Monday in Scottsville. I had a concern, just found out that the restroom's going to be closed down here, the outside restroom, next to its old Domino's room, some of y'all may remember that, and I've been dealing with that old restroom down there for about 10 years, been opening it up and closing it, and of course, that, just short history, and I want to tell you what, the reason I'm really speaking, the problem. You've got problems in the county, no doubt. So, the restroom for the First Monday, I mean, I was ready to pitch a fit with Mr. Guffey and say, man, what are you doing, closing this restroom up? You know, because old people come up here, it's cool down there, you can wash your hands, and there is one toilet. There's been a change in the restroom, and it's not a good change. And unfortunately, the change surrounds the courthouse. What has happened in the west area of this courthouse has been a tremendous amount of settling. amount of settling of the structure. The walls are separating down there, whether it be ground movement, whether it be water damage, whether it be, uh, ground movement, water damage, and, and, and the constant drying out of the ground, there's a problem surrounding the courthouse. I went around and photographed all these areas inside and outside today, Wayne went with me, Mr. Guffey and I went down to the bathroom, we talked about this, Mr. McKenna and I went down to the records room. I wanna show you something, there is a space in the records room, the old records room, next to the outside wall, where the wall of the old courthouse is separated this much. There's probably four to six inches of separation. One part of the old brick wall is over here, another part of the brick wall is here. That's a serious separation, and water is inundating that, that area all the time. The drains down in that section have been stocked up for a long time, Mr. Guffey is aware of it, but one thing I, I learned also today touring the courthouse, there's a bar right out here, nobody's run into that bar. The reason the bar is bent, and it is bent, is because the courthouse has moved, and the ground has moved right out here, and the bar is now curved, where you look at the other bar, right under it, it's straight. That, that movement, the bending of that bar is a result of movement of the ground and courthouse. Is, as I went around and looked, different area of the courthouse, there's areas where the pad on the south entrance out here has literally sunk two inches, and you can see the area against the brick where the pad was. There's areas out here, I just looked at my picture, Jonathan, I'm talking about this ramp out here, there's areas of separation, probably five or six inches in the ramp out here, to the back area of the courthouse. Well, I was gonna tell Tim, "Man, I'm gonna argue with you about this, I need this bathroom," but guess what I done? I turned in my keys. The bathroom in there is a hazard to the health of the people. If a heavy rain or wind come up and that, you know, you may not think walls move during wind, even big walls such as courthouse, they move. I could see where there'd be a massive collapse down there, and the ceiling, uh, the tiles on the wall would come down, possibly cause injury. The floor is buckled to such an extent, and all this is happening recently, this ain't something, I, I mean, the process's been going on for many years, but the buckling of that floor to the extent it is in separation of the wall and the floor, in separation of the ceiling, and, and by the way, as you walk around on the second floor of the courthouse, you can see the separation too, uh, where the new additions have been made, and they're increasing. There's a serious problem in the ground stability around this courthouse. Now, if some of y'all know history and study history, where it used to be an old sulfur well right out front here, there's pictures of it, and believe it or not, it used to be a sulfur well right out here, too. There's actually pictures of them filling in that old sulfur well. Right down here on this corner, used to be a huge tree, and there, that old tree down there, I think it was an old oak tree, used to be a well down there, but all that's filled in, they cut down the tree, because the tree was actually causing damage to the drainage pipes and sewer pipes and gas lines there, so the tree went, they fixed all that, but all around the courthouse, I'm telling you, there's a serious problem, and ladies and gentlemen, if you hadn't seen it, I would suggest you go look, you take a tour with Wayne, you take a tour with Mr. Guffey, y'all need to do something about it, because the courthouse is sinking on the ends where the additions with courthouse. The old section in the records room where there's water inundation serious, that ain't natural, man, where that wall was here, and the wall, you got another section wall way over here, and the, the plaster that's over that wall, of course, all gone, you can literally see through that wall right there. That is a problem, and it's up to you to do something about it. I'm here telling you about it, I was surprised, like I said, I was ready to present that argument, I, we need that restroom for First Monday, but, uh, I understand the problem, it's greater than what I thought, and the problem's getting worse, it ain't resolving, it's getting worse, and, and in the commission office, they were telling me, "Hey, wouldn't have done the renovation in there, the carpet?" Mr. Guffey in the commission office, "There's been a hole, yeah, a big hole in there," which is temporary repair, repairs like this is only temporary, it ain't gonna be permanent till the larger area's fixed, so, and, and there's always been problems, I've been familiar with problems in the courthouse here for many years, going back to the early nineties, but, uh, anyway, I wanna bring this to your attention, I'm saying there's a serious problem here, not only you got the road problems, uh, that you got other problems right here in this building. Thank you for your time. You got, I've got pictures here, y'all got any questions, I'm right here.
What you just explained here, I mean, uh, myself and Mr. Rich, and Venable, and Mr. Guffey, we're all down, what, about four weeks ago?
Yeah.
Looking at all of this right there, and, uh, I mean, it, it is a major problem, and, uh, and I reached Miss Gilbert one there, her, her dad, the doctor's woman, and, uh, we, we were all observing and trying to see what all we had problems with.
From this citizen's standpoint, having knowledge of this courthouse, going back almost, you know, at least twenty-five years, twenty-eight years, something like that, having worked in this courthouse, I'm telling you, the problem's getting worse. Uh, just down there in that bathroom, I have intimate knowledge of that, 'cause I cleaned it up, been restocking it for over ten years, you know? So, the problem's getting worse down there, and within the past couple months, it's really gotten worse with the buckling of the floors and the water inundation, the separation of floor and the wall, it ain't gonna get no better. You got a problem. So, I, you know, my suggestion would be, you need to have an outside engineer come in and look at it, a structural engineer, give you an expert opinion, that costs money, I know, but you gotta do some, something has to, to give on this before you have a disaster. In other words, you got a citizen up here saying, and y'all are aware of it, you got the makings, and you got people working construction here, you know, Mr. Venable, he builds houses, you know, a lot, a lot of y'all familiar with, with, with what goes on in construction, buildings moving, and soil sinking, the water dryness, and, and, and the whole bit, but you got a problem, you got, this citizen says, having intimate knowledge of this courthouse for a long time, you, you got to get a structural engineer in here.
We already have. I've got the report.
Thank you.
We've already got that report, um, and we also got some contractors that's looking at, seeing what it'll cost to try to make some of the repairs, uh, to stop it from sinking and moving any further. So, we've, we've already, we've already core drilled, we've already had a engineer, structural engineer, done went through the whole building, so, we've already done that, we done that about six weeks ago, eight weeks ago.
The structural en, you, a structural engineer has gave you a report?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, that report can be requested, then?
We had some drilling and stuff.
Yeah, we had core drill and studied them.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much.
I think from what I can gather, being an old farmer and things, uh, this drought we had in two thousand sixteen, I know my grain beans and facility over there, where a lot of it is, it's, it's, uh, cracked, and, uh, I've had some geodeck folks come out and looked at it, and they all, first thing they say, two thousand sixteen, you didn't have no moisture in the ground, they said it's all over State of Alabama that way, so, I've learned a lot myself, some of these procedures.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morgan.